We're on, Wendy. Good evening. I'm happy to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Today is September 26th. And may I have a motion for approval at the minute?
Twenty seconds.
Any discussion? Almost in favor. It's unanimous that most of them passes. We have time for public comment. Seeing only professionals in the audience, we will move along to the principals' reports.
Thank you everyone. Welcome back. So some things happening at Chancellor. I want to let you know in possible form seventeen students that came through our doors this year, almost twenty-five new students at Chancellor just across the grade three and five this year. As always, K-2, 3, 5 open house for the first couple of weeks of school. Slight change with last year. We continue with this year. I thought it was very successful. We actually had staff begin the nights in their rooms. And partially, most of that reason was primarily so that not only had a little extra time to set up and get ready, but also to give an opportunity for that first half hour to be not only my comments, but certainly groups in the community that we work with, RSF, Culture Connect, Harry Anthony, who's a case to tie. So we just wanted to, and very successful, right down to the minute, got it down in there. Maybe eight or nine open houses. Got it down. So, and I wanted to just thank us a little more for coming and making themselves available. So I was going to have you guys help start this thing off right. So thank you. So this past week, we kicked off our Harry Potter character ed unit. It's our second, the specialist team kind of pulled together, not less than the summer before, put the shooting together, about five weeks long. It is, it's basically just a character ed for the most part, that follows some of the interesting parts from the books that all the kids of area went into toward. So certainly it's highly motivating. We had our house ceremony, they were in their rooms and the whole thing. It's pretty cool. So we did that last week. And we're hoping to, I'll be doing some planning at the BLPT, and I'll be talking to my great old chairs. Last year I may have mentioned to you some of the PBIS initiatives, the Homegrown PBIS initiative we were working on. We had some, our quote-unquote brag tags, or little kind of conversation starters for kids and parents, came in a little bit late. So we got everything ready to roll, and we're ready to hit the ground running with a few little minor details from the meltdown. I also want to run by my people service, like for example, my, so I said I have psychologists, my social worker, to just make sure it's kind of ready to really go up and running. Well, the reason I mention is because it's, we're going to back it up to the, back it up to the tail end of the Harry Potter, you have to shoot that character ed. So it's very much really, rather having two things going at once. So I'll give you an update on that coming soon. Also want to just give a little shout out to our specialist team also for organizing. We have a unit coming up that you're all going to collaborate on once again in February at Coreside with the Winter Olympics. So we'll look forward to that, reporting out some of the things that they're doing. Wanted to let you know some of the goals this year, just for myself, especially with my faculty. One of them have a lot to do with utilizing my faculty conferences in a very different way. We did a lot of work last year on balanced literacy. We went through a teaching comprehension and fluency, kind of, I don't want to call it a textbook for founders of panel, who were the gurus of bouncers, kind of put out this movement of how to, you know, teach comprehension and fluency with schools, no matter what grade you're teaching. So one of the things, last year we picked the six specific areas to create placemats to kind of cut through that book and make it kind of manageable for everyone. And then we started, we started piecing pieces of that together. So for example, we're going to start with our interactive real lab, talking about exemplars from Lox, my assistant principal and I are going to utilize it, we can start October with that. But we really utilize that time to have a little more around daily discussions with staff around that resource to kind of fill capacity. Again, people sharing that's my assistant, we're going to start that this October, next week actually. Also wanted to let you know that Fern and I, I've reached out to the principal at Hillcrest Elementary in Peekskill. Why that school, my wife happens to work there. She's actually her own little guru of events that we're seeing in that district. She's one of the lab sites for the entire district, for people to just pop in, whether it be for superintendents to administrators to other teachers from the other buildings to see how the workshop model is really done. And she looped with her class, fourth to fifth grade this year. So I told a couple of people already, it was interesting. Her first complaint after the first day of school was she only had the conference with eight of her twenty-eight students, which I thought was quite nice in the first day. Able to hit the ground running and working with her, Fern and I, to get kind of a little refresher to work with someone outside of the building to manage conference, because I think that's what she's setting that up, a visit for the two of us one morning. Pivots for Peace, every year we do it in the first couple of weeks of school. This year it was this past Monday. It's time of the International Day of Peace. Again, this year it was Monday, September 25th. Caged in five students that worked on the pivots that we quote-unquote planted in the front lawn of the school. Last year we kind of turned it a little more into an assembly, into the pledge of allegiance together. It was really a wonderful exercise of communal positivity, is the best way to put it. So we got to do that this year, and our students join. The idea is for them to, it represents their commitment to peace in our community, and they're trying to instill peace in our community. And they actually joined sixty-seven million kids worldwide and have our inspiration. So we're ready to do that this, thank Vaughn Johnson. Once again, every year she organizes that, and really hits it the first week of school. And this is really a great way to start the year off. Wanted to also let you know, and I'll report on it later at other meetings, but that we are, once again, going to work with the Center for Child Abuse Prevention to deliver developmentally appropriate lessons, Ate for Five. Had an amazing experience with that last year. Those of you who are here, I hope you remember me kind of reporting out on how really specific to kindergarten, specifically to first grade. In fact, they're, none of those lessons for each grade are interchangeable, unless it is true this place to have precise and specific day. So we're looking forward to working with them in December this year. Very early on, I guess this goes under upcoming events, but things were planned. Illustrator Brian Collier is coming hopefully November 7th to work with grades three, four, and five, specializes in watercolors and collage as a medium, and he's going to work with the kids, a lot of hands-on activities, kind of quote-unquote, that start from a linkable assembly that he does. Just talking about the process and how he gets ideas and has to paper, something kind of similar, but a much smaller, smaller event to Bush, every two, four, three. Wanted to mention a math night out. We've started advertising. It will be October 12th, 6:30 to 7:30 with Barbara Zell, Karen Martin, who's my AAS math teacher, and myself, to just offer some guidance on math instruction, some of the things we're working on. We've been working on getting that last year, and lucky to do something really early this year. Also want to let you know, in fact, tomorrow I'm meeting with our very own Henry Frisch Connect to discuss some possible pen pal initiatives with CLS for Culture Connect, with Madagascar, with some people in Madagascar. So hoping to really try to, try to build a sort of success that is brought into the district in that partnership, and start working with some of our students at Chancellor. Speaking of Culture Connect, some of our upcoming events, we had LLL program that we do every year. It's their twelfth year working with us. Will begin next week, October 3rd, we have the most amount of students in the after-school LLL program, which services ENL students in our, in our world. So great to have them back when they, when they're approved, when those students are part. Madagascar Day will be October 20th. Once again, we're doing the Malagasy dance program, the second and eighth grades, so the grades come over with us. Always love those kind of partnerships. And finally, Title One AAS Open House will be Wednesday, October 25th.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Laura.
Actually, two questions. Do you have any pictures from Harry Potter's opening moment?
Yes, yes.
And the pinwheels and stuff that?
We do, we do. We were a little worried, because we don't have our list of completed yet, of no video, audio, that kind of thing. However, we are going to be forwarding something to Joe, actually, hopefully very soon. I found out that Vaughn Johnson was able to get a video from the back of all the kids turning around, looking to play.
Awesome, yeah.
And we took a lot of audio, video photographs of the assembly. So I put a piece of that together, since in fact they just saw Kevin and Garamelle just now. Boy, do I wish I had that kind of marriage.
Don't we ask?
Get done in a day. Anyway, I'll talk to him, we're going to get some stuff sent to him.
Great. And also your math night out, is that for parents or for kids?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great, thank you.
Dan?
The Center for Child Abuse, how often, they come once a year?
Well, we started last year, I think before, maybe the year I had first gotten here, we had a couple of years where they had come. I don't know how that had fallen off, but really, we really started our partnership with them about two years ago. Last year they did all five, all sixth grades, and that was really the first time we brought them back for everyone. I think the second time for sure. Just, it's about two days, most of the classes in a month.
How does the 417 number compare with last year?
I want to say, don't go counting, you got 440 last year, 430? Somewhere around there, I can't remember how much we were in. Large group going out, small group, and I think we're at fifty-six or fifty-seven each regard. And then a couple of additions, you know, in addition to the new, the new twenty-five new students, we could have a handful of discharges, for example, probably about twenty-five or a little less. About that's actually, say again? And you added a class? And we added, sorry.
Yes, Dan.
When people leave the district, do they tell you why they're leaving? Like, is that information that you know?
Rarely, you know, rarely I would know why maybe usually, you know, and that kind of thing. We have people who even will stay. If you ask, it's possible intuition and things like that.
Thank you so much for telling us about everything happening at Chancellor. It sounds great. Great start to the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome back. I'm actually going to backtrack a little bit to late spring and the MIR report this evening with some kudos for one of my, one of my ELA teachers. Nancy Abel in late June was selected as a 2017 Educator of Excellence by the New York State English Council. So we were, we were very pleased to hear that. She will be honored at an awards luncheon during the NYSEC conference up in all the lead this coming October. As always, I always begin September with a, you know, kind of a shout out and a thank you to Sheldon. It's, you know, as you saw, as you walked around both of the buildings this evening, he's done a fantastic job, the O&M crew and the social staff do a wonderful job over the course of the summer getting our building ready. In, you know, in addition to all of the work that they typically do during summertime this year, they had the opportunity and the time to do a number of aesthetic updates and upgrades of the middle school. So I'm very pleased that that came. Our current enrollment right now sits at 248 students. Light breath, we had an influx of students over the course of the summer. I think we lost two students, an incoming sixth grader, and what would have been a seventh grader, and we gained seventeen new students. So our enrollment, you know, from, from this past spring to now is at plus fifteen, with for whatever reason, ten new, ten new seventh graders. All of our, you know, opening of the school year activities, sixth grade walking schedule might, new student orientation, our open house, they've all been held, they've all been very well attended this year. As I said, we had a lot of new students for new student orientation. We put a call out, as we do every year, through our PT SO representatives for, you know, a handful of seventh and eighth grade students that would be willing to come back and greet our, our new incoming students to the district. And, you know, the handful turned out to be third kids. So we were really pleased. It was wonderful. Meg coordinated Carmella family, did a wonderful job. The kids took our new students who off, Carmella and I had an opportunity to sit down with our new parents, Meg coordinated games and activities and tours. So all of our new students that were coming into the building for the first time this fall, knew quite a few faces as they entered the doorway. So we were really pleased by that. Open House again, earlier this month, thank you Jacqueline for representing the Board of Education at the Middle School Open House. We made 175 packets this year. We only had five left over, so 170 students were represented with parents very well attended this year. Feedback I've received has been very positive. As we begin our new school year, many of our teachers are anxious to pilot and to show off the product, out there are some curriculum projects. This year, and I feel like I say this every September and have over the course of the last several years, we had more teachers in my building and summer work going on than I can ever remember. I don't think there was a day that I was here with the clerical staff or here with my, you know, my guidance counselor, you know, by ourselves. We had handfuls of teachers in all summer long. Both our ELA and math departments worked in conjunction with the special education teachers in each of the grade levels, as well as the academic support teachers, to create these exit assessments that are perfectly aligned at all three grade levels. These, this year are going to be piloted, piloted as pre-test and post-test, and they're going to replace the NWEAD and Math Assessments. So we're really looking forward to that. Several of our sixth grade teachers are going to begin using the comprehensive learning management system Canvas. We have a number of teachers that already use Canvas in the middle school. Last year we discovered, as we started to poll the teachers at various grade levels about what they were using. We had teachers using different platforms, and we had teachers at the sixth grade level in particular, using different platforms. We're looking to make them uniform, particularly at the sixth grade level, and build a strong foundation. So we now have four different teachers that are going to be using the Canvas platform at the sixth grade level. Again, this is going to build a great foundation for them as they move into seventh and eighth grade. Our art department, I believe this is, this is across all three buildings, are going to be piloting the use of a program called Arsonia, which will create a district-wide online portfolio, art portfolio for every student K-12, that will follow them as they go through their lives. I know I told you about this in the past, but we have several new faces around the table. I believe I reported at one point about a project that my eighth grade special ed teacher, Tom Blass, did, where he created, I think it was 187 videos, and has his own YouTube, YouTube channel with an instructional video that goes along with every single homework that's given by Mrs. Fuchs at the eighth grade level. So this year he decided to take that one step farther, and his summer project was to create unique QR codes that are now on every single homework sheet that's handed out at the eighth grade level. And any eighth grade students, general, at special ed, anyone that needs a little extra hand with a simple free app on their, on their smartphone, can link that QR code directly and go directly to the video that Mr. Blass produced on YouTube. That's my personal favorite this year. In support of the Seadest Land and the board's goal around social and emotional health, our sixth grade team spent a lot of time this summer revamping their opening days of school agenda, as well as a number of pro-social skills lessons that they've taught in the past. Some are new, some are old, and just renewed. But we're hoping that this new focus on community building and pro-social skills, particularly again at the sixth grade level, will start the year with positive role modeling and decrease anxiety a little bit, helping that transition from CLS to BMS and build community in one of the middle schools. And finally, a committee of grade level teachers, attended by Henry Frisch Connect. And again, I know I've reported out on this each fall, of course, in the last three years, and I'm pleased to report again, and Brett already mentioned, Madagascar Day, but we will be holding our third annual Madagascar Day on October 25th this year. As I've done past, I invite you all to attend. Through Joe, I will share with you a kind of laundry list of events and the schedule for that morning. As you know, we've kind of built this program across each of the three grade levels as progression. And this will actually be the first year, as our eighth grade students have now done this for three years, where we've had students that are transitioning across all three programs. Sixth grade's all about education. They will watch Island of neighbors, Madagascar. Again, we will have several of Dr. Patricia Wright's doctoral students that will come up and join us for that morning, and they'll present, sixth grade students with keen undergaps about the culture of Madagascar, biodiversity of Madagascar. And then our sixth grade students will have three breakout sessions. One will, where they'll be learning about the ancient Malagasy food. That session's being done in conjunction with Culture Connect. They'll be creating mini books about customs and holidays. In the years past, some of those books, actually this past summer, went over with Mrs. Burns and Mr. Frisch Connect, and were shared with the students over in Madagascar. And the third station, for sixth grade students, will be learning about conservation of endangered species. They'll actually have an opportunity to view five leavers and pissing cockroaches next to the two-by-two zoo. Seventh grade, it's all about creation. Once again, we're fortunate to be able to work with ZR Amina. They will be in working with our students. Students will be learning about Madagascar, the storytelling, music, and theatrical performance. And our eighth grade is all about community outreach. So again, and some of these sites aren't finalized, we will have students that will be going to two area preschools, teaching about the culture of Madagascar, reading books and craft projects, showing genuine art pieces from Madagascar. We will have students that are going to be doing basket weaving and playing Malagasy games with residents at both Baptist Home and Thompson House. We will have students, as Brett shared, working with the second grade classes over in CLS and the van for Kinder, Caravan, teaching Malagasy dance. And finally, with cooperation of the town board and the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce, we will have our scavengers up throughout the shops and trees around the village of Rhinebeck, as we have leavers hanging in stores, and, you know, there'll be some riders from those, those. So again, that's some of what's going on in BMS. And going back to Madagascar Day, I will share lots of information between now and October 25th, with, and we hope that you're all able to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Kemenzzer. If you have questions, comments.
I have a quick one. Mr. Blass's QR codes sound very cool. How do we help the students who may or may not be allowed to have a smartphone yet, or who may or may not have computers at home?
We're actually, we're actually working on that. As a matter of fact, there was a conversation in my building instructional council meeting this afternoon. We're actually calling all of our, all of our students six, seventy, that's actually been completed, sixth grade to eighth grade. We're very fortunate in that we have very few students, however, we do have a handful that we know either don't have use of computer at home, or don't have internet access at home. We have to poll seventh grade students, that's going to be completed tomorrow, but we are going to start to brainstorm ideas, and that's how we can better support those students that don't have access to that technology.
Great. Thanks.
Can you use the QR codes directly with the computer without scanning it with the phone?
That I don't.
So it is, I mean, when Laura was?
That I don't know, but you can, you can access, each of them also have the link to the YouTube channel.
They have a link, right?
So again, it's just, it's just another means of getting the extra support and the extra assistance. It's not necessary, but it's, you know, a neat opportunity to have, to have access to that technology.
I think that also, just a question and a comment, applies to kind of that flipped classroom that Justin did with geometry last year, not knowing which kids had access to technology. So as things kind of go that direction, I think it's more important to figure out what the limitations are. Question on the open house, I mean, one of the confusing things for me when Shay acted sixth grade was knowing who was on Canvas, who was on personal website, who was doing what with respect to where quiz dates were posted, things like that. So until everybody's up on Canvas, is there some kind of cheat sheet that parents can get to know what classes are aware, so we're not hunting at the last minute when it's nine o'clock at night, there's a quiz? Yeah, I think the COVID houses are great, but, you know, each teacher has its own thing, and I think parents get a bit overwhelmed, and if you're not there, it's kind of hard to go back and figure out what teacher's using what platform.
Sure. What I've asked teachers to do, and, you know, I think most have, most have done this, I'm not sure that everybody's done this yet, but what I've asked teachers to do is to use their website, kind of as their baseline, and to link their Canvas through their website. You know, I think as parents get, you know, familiarize themselves with Canvas and the teachers that are on Canvas, again, at the sixth grade level in particular, we have a couple of teachers that are using this for the very first time themselves, and kind of learning as they go along. But what I'd like them all to do is I'd like them to use their website, and again, link Canvas from their website.
Yeah, as long as there's a known portal that you're going to consistently, and then you can branch out, that's, that would be great.
You know, Henry Frisch Connect, who is in the dell, whether for, you know, Canvas use, you know, he's known that as well. And I think at this point, I think seventh grade parents know to use Canvas exclusively with him, but that isn't necessarily the case with our teachers.
Just a question and a comment, I guess. As part of the long-range planning groups work studying every aspect of the schools, it's quite interesting to learn that so many new students arrived in the summer. I don't know if you have any thoughts at all about any kind of patterns you see in terms of the influx of students?
You know, I don't know. I can tell you that the families that are coming to us, and they're coming from all, we have a returning family who has twin, you know, son and daughter in seventh grade, they're returning from Sweden. They didn't in Sweden for two years. But we have a number of students from neighboring districts, Kingston, Hyde Park, moving into this district specifically because of the reputation of the school, district area of the education. Typically, I'd say over the last several years, although last year, last year we didn't hold a new student orientation in the middle school, because we had two new students coming into the, into the school. I think over the years, we've probably averaged somewhere in the nine, 10, and 11 range, but we usually had four, five, or six that offset that. This was an unusual year, seventeen new students, and only two students left.
Excellent. And then just the comment, it's very heartening to hear all the thought that's going into helping students make that transition into the middle school, and absolutely supporting and working together on this goal of studying the challenges our students are facing in terms of social and emotional health and well-being. And it's just great to hear how much thought is going into that from the very first day when students arrive. So thank you.
Good evening, let me add my welcome to that of my colleague. I'll start with some facts and figures. In the high school, we welcomed 373 students to the high school, and that compares to the last year, we had 383, so 10 fewer. And the class sizes ranged from 91 in the ninth grade to 98 in the senior class. We had 12 new registrants, and among our new registrants, we welcomed three exchange students, one student from South Korea, one from Germany, and one, most recently, from Bangladesh. As always, we welcome the insights and perspectives of exchange students compared to our school. I want to echo what Mr. Kemenzzer said. Thanks again to the work of our custodians and summer staff. The building was in pristine condition, both more students back, and it really helps to set a positive and strong tone in our building. And as I may have mentioned in other contexts, I consider myself something of a connoisseur of floors, all floors, borders, and then they really pop. This after a complete state, I'll tell you, when Mr. Kemenzzer finished with them in late August, they were, they were in the middle of the hole. Again, really sets a positive tone. Thanks to our summer staff, housing staff, who opened up very smoothly. Once again, this is where we're organizing the freshman walk-through for our students. And almost two-thirds of our ninth graders took advantage of this opportunity, the walk-through schedule, and try out their locker. Typically, we're about half of the freshman class will take advantage. So we had an uptick, or what an uptick in the numbers of those students. This is the sixth year of our peer mentoring club, advised by, you know, my social worker, 15 peer mentors were trained over the summer in team-building exercises, listening still as how to serve as a positive role modeler, and how to be a good mentor. And those peer mentors are paired, the students move to the district, and as the course of the year continues, those students will be partnered with other students, need various supports in their academic lives. We have a total of 50 peer tutors, and they serve as a sort of leadership cadre, and offer assistance to teachers and office assistants to students who may have difficulty navigating academic stuff in high school. The BLPT had its first meeting last week, and we will begin our work this year by continuing our pilot AAS service. We're working with some local organizations, working with the village, have a contact with the Star Library to organize AAS service based around the athletic season, so we're hoping to hopefully through the fall, winter, and spring. We'll be meeting soon with the village government to see if, how we can partner with the tree planting, which is understanding to take place on the fourth. So we'd like to pair that with an activity in the school, and provide ways to facilitate our students start participating and go over to either of those activities. As you recall, the BLPT administration
As you recall, the BLPT administered surveys last year to the last school year to graduate seniors and to freshmen at the end of their ninth grade year. We're in the process of reviewing those survey resources in order to help inform both side of, you know, the DA this year. We also ask the graduating seniors to provide us with contact information, whether that was an email address, perhaps a cell phone number, someone to text. We'd like to survey our music grads at the end of their first year after high school to get a sense of how effective our practices are here. And I look forward to reporting back to you on those, also that survey. In terms of some academic updates, as of today, admissions representatives from 29 colleges have visited our students in college careers classes and look forward to inviting more admissions reps to speak with our students about the application process, and there's some questions about what they find important in student application materials. The English department will continue our partnership for the third year with Barre College. Mrs. Bear will be accompanying all her ninth grade students to Barre on November 17th, where they will again participate in writing and reading workshops that are facilitated by Barre students who are in the Institute for Writing and Thinking. Once again, students enrolled in English while they're regents will travel to Milan to augment their study of American transatlanticists. As you know already, our journalism class will be hosting their first press conference to the city hall then, of course. And on October 6th, Poughkeepsie Journal, opinion editor John Penny will be visiting our journalism students. These questions, and they're kind of, you know, for career journalism. As Mr. Kemenzzer mentioned, and as you know, faculty did a lot of work on curriculum development over the summer. And while the process of reviewing this work is ongoing, I wanted to recognize the professionalism and seriousness with which they undertook this task. Part of their work, from the small group, involved a committee of teachers devising an application process and a review process that would enable our school to award a seal of bilinguality to our graduating students. The seal of bilinguality very briefly indicates that a student has met prerecorded competencies both in English and knowledge of other languages. So they put the system together, along with our evaluation group, will review that meeting. Mr. Krebs and I will present that for input to the curriculum committee. And then our hope is that we'll be able to, we'll be able to award a seal of bilinguality to our graduates at the end of this school year. In addition, as well known, learning standards have been revised and improved in social studies, science, next generation standards in middle and late, and math. Our faculty will again, getting a view of what those changes mean for their practice this year. The science standards are very interesting, particularly in terms of the way they apply science for lack of a better term, engineering. C3 standards in social studies, which stands in the college career specific mindedness, are based on inquiry model, confused students, the tools to theoretically think historically about events. So it's a great work, I think, for the state, but it's going to be taught for our faculty to really master these standards and incorporate them into their practice. Our co-curriculum activities have begun meeting. Faculty decided to hold an activity fair on Friday, October 6th. As some of your members remember, we, we go back and forth as a faculty in terms of finding the best way to enable all of our students to get any extracurricular activities. This year, we'll go back to an activity fair. On a related note, faculty have decided this year to pilot a monthly activity period in order to present assembly programs and other programs for our students. What frequently happens is we will, we'll be aware of the assembly opportunity for our students, and we just can't shoot hornet in into our academic schedule. So the thinking was that we had a placeholder each month for assembly and activity, which would be easier to accommodate these opportunities and provide them to our students. We've already begun some planning for this semester. For November, the department chairs are looking at the assembly program on diversity and positive school climate. In December, we will host a band concert, an in-house band concert, featuring of course our student positions. And in the spring, we'll look at slot for a chorus concert, St. John's Assembly, and we'll have some other opportunities as well. The Drama Club will host a talent show again this year in addition to staging a non-musical drama, so we're full of that. The Environmental Club has started its fundraiser for the David Shubert Animal Shelter and National Society of Induction is scheduled to take place on the Center of the Class. I wanted to take this opportunity as well to bring to your attention a safety team recommendation. The safety team, as you know, is composed of faculty, nonstructural support staff, administrators, and part of this mission is to review our emergency response plan, make suggestions for revision when the show is in school here. The last time we met in the spring, the safety team had a recommendation. I had not had an opportunity in our report since we met after my last report to share the recommendation with you, but I wanted to take a few minutes or so tonight. And briefly, the, the recommendation from the building safety team is that we expand our camera coverage to move inside from outside. The thinking from the building safety team is that we give us administrators, we administrators another tool in order to ensure that we have a safe, secure, and globally learning environment. As we talked further with, Jensen was the teacher, the thinking was we would use monies from the smart, smart school bond in order to support installation of these devices. Looking ahead, we have open house on Thursday, a senior parent meeting will take place next week, 6:30. And we're very lucky to have a financial aid officer from Dutchess County Community College to talk with parents about the using of our classes and, and the financial requirements. The Andy Dymon tournament, of course, takes place on October 6th. The PSAT will be the most here by October 14th. We'll have a freshman sophomore parent meeting on October 7th.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dymon. Questions or comments?
What, could you talk a little bit more about the safety team recommendation of adding video cameras in the building? Where and what's the thinking?
The thinking was this would be in common areas. So we're talking about corridors and cafeteria. And then, you know, tentatively game plan, with Mr. Peter, the plan would not be to be able to cover every little cranny, but just to give shots down, let's say, hallways and to have views in the cafeteria.
And it would be running through the school day or?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, similar to, I would, I would expect to our exterior cameras, which are run throughout the school day. The exterior ones are activated, there's motion activated, so they shut down, there's official motion in that particular field. So guessing that would be the same sort of setup.
Other questions? I have a question. Can you tell us a little more about the diversity and positive school climate idea for this first assembly?
Sure. The, when the department chairs met, we were, reviewed some, some types of documentation regarding how educators can respond to the United Charlotte.
Yes.
So some of the responses in order to support our students involve making sure the students were accepting and fulfilling our mission of diversity. So we talked a little bit about some potential speakers, a couple were suggested. I polled my colleagues, counting regarding their experiences, so it would be assembly coordinators and speakers. And we've got a couple names that we've identified. Certainly, the assembly coordinator of this nature, it's the department chairs, of course, that can't be a, you know, a one-shot deal.
Of course, of course.
It has to be embedded and reinforced with other cultural resources. So we look forward to once the CDEP team conducts its survey, to partner with CDEP and infusing this, this mission with a broader school district mission, to ensure we have a safe and secure school climate. So we have one candidate that's written a form that I've committed.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Really great reviews, so we're looking at availability and making sure we can make our schedule match with the others.
Well, I'm sure we'll all look forward to hearing about that, and, and please let us know if at the board level we can assist or support those efforts. That would be great. Thank you. Board committee reports. And I have an extremely long report. All right. I just want to say, I will not summarize the entire report. The Long Range Planning Committee, in its ongoing efforts to understand the organization of staff, of curriculum, and of how our buildings work, met with Emily Davidson to go over all of the special education work that is going on in our district, which is truly extraordinary. I think some of the takeaways are that at every opportunity where a teaching assistant or a teacher aide can be deployed to support both special education programs and general education, that is being done. There was some discussion of choices to be made between contracting for services, as we do for occupational therapy, physical therapy, as opposed to having someone in the school building, as has been the case for the last several years, with the social workers in our district, and weighing, right, the kind of costs and benefits of those two different models. And of course, Emily Davidson is an extremely articulate, knowledgeable woman, and I just did the best I could to try to convey some of what she told us. There are special services, as you could have read from the minutes, such as the speech and language pathologists who come in and work particularly in the elementary school, parent trainers, sign language interpreters, all of whom are deployed in a kind of very targeted and specific way to support the needs that we need to support in our school population. We discussed one-to-one staffing needs, which arise in very specific circumstances. We talked about English language learners, and of course, the law has become much more specific about how we support English language learners in our district, and how we deploy staff to, to deliver those services. Emily Davidson also talked to us about the differences in using resource room at certain grade levels as a kind of support, as opposed to other kinds of support. We reviewed out-of-district placements, which is, as we know, on a kind of ad hoc basis, we hear about specific cases with out-of-district placements, and we got a sense of the range, and again, the costs associated with the different kinds of placements that have been the case in Rhinebeck over the last few years. It was also very interesting to hear Emily Davidson talk about when and how it's appropriate to try to pull students back into our buildings, into our district, as opposed to keeping them in those placements without examining that on a regular basis. We talked about the difference between homebound students and homeschooled students. We talked about the ways in which we deliver special education services in certain cases with homeschooled students. We raised the question of gifted and talented designations, and how does New York State view in public schooling that as a kind of special education concern? And interestingly, Emily observed that in some states, this is, in Pennsylvania and Florida, considered a part of the mission of special education to support gifted and talented students. It's not true in New York, however. She gave us a sense of what that would mean in terms of, especially in a small school community, sort of creating tracking, depending on how that could be developed. And she spoke rather eloquently about the philosophical commitment of the Rhinebeck schools to what she called the diversity of cognitive and academic groupings, which she finds to be extraordinary in Rhinebeck and a source of, of great strength and accomplishment. We talked about the length of time that special education services are mandated, and that essentially with students who require some of these services, it's not until the year they turn 21 that our responsibility to them ends. We asked about the growth of special education needs. And I think it's important really to understand what she helped us to see, which is while we see this growth in our own district, we're very aware of it, it's a small school, we see those changes year to year, and we feel how that impacts our planning. This is something that is happening across the state, and we asked why that might be. She pointed out that one in four children will be diagnosed with some sort of illness or condition that requires some kind of additional support before they turn 21. That's just a statistic that affects all young people in this generation. She described it as a mental health crisis. So this is not just a challenge for us, it's a challenge for all public schools. She says that the schools strive to balance direct support with promoting and developing strategies for children to be resilient and independent learners. And I think that's a really important balance for us to continually support. She talked about the higher incidence of what she called comorbidity between kind of overlapping diagnoses and challenges that students are coping with. That makes special education an even more complex field today than, say, it was 20 years ago. She also pointed out that there are very different sort of diagnostic tools at our disposal now, and many diagnoses can be made much earlier than once was the case. We talked about the need for general education teachers to receive support and professional development in terms of serving all the needs of our students, because it simply is no longer the case that this is a kind of a two, you know, a system where the two groups are not more or less overlapping, and class sizes reflect that. What are the trends for the future? She talked about integrated co-teaching as a model that is important to explore, as opposed to sort of having supports with supplemental instruction that takes place outside the classroom, a greater emphasis on differentiation and delivery within the classroom of the kind of support students need to learn the material in terms of the content, rather than reteaching. So she explored that model with us and the team model. We talked at some length about the demonstrated strengths of special education in our school district. It's clearly something that, at least in Emily Davidson's experience, draws some families to our district, and we're doing a very good job of delivering it, and we're doing a good job of delivering it without being lavish, I think that's important to say. She compared, for instance, the personnel planning with some school districts near us, with fewer students and the same number of staff. She talked about, you know, staffs that were, you know, you know, 16 as opposed to 10 with comparably sized student populations. So one of the things we asked her is to help us look at our statistical neighbors, to really look at what is considered adequate staffing in special education, and also how do we really demonstrate what we are delivering in terms of the outcomes for our students in special education? We reviewed our very lengthy to-do list. We are planning to have our postcard go out very soon. Laura will tell us about that at our next meeting. And we are talking about our benchmarks for this year, which will be very clearly enumerated for you soon. Questions? Read the minutes. Clearly, they were good. Nobody asked any questions.
You didn't kidnap Emily for a day.
This really was an hour and a half.
We got a lot of that conversation with her.
She was prepared.
She was extreme.
If we invite anyone, they won't do it.
Really, very, very good.
Okay, so let's move on to the curriculum committee.
Those are mine. So we sort of hijacked our meeting a little bit and made Marvin talk about long-range planning for curriculum. One of the conversations that happened last spring around the budget cycle was the idea of a board workshop centered around curricular planning for the future, and so we'd like to sort of take the pulse of the board to get a sense of whether or not people are interested in doing that, and understanding what courses we offer and how and why we may need to restructure things for the future, and if we all feel like that should be a conversation that we all participate in. So if you let us know that, that would be great. As part of those discussions, we will continue to explore with Marvin state requirements, Rhinebeck requirements, and the extra things that, that we teach here, and understanding the implications of any changes we may or may not choose to make in the future. We talked about the idea of machine learning. We talked about the idea of machine learning, what are best practices, what are next practices, are there successful models that we can look to, see if anything fits for particular populations for Reinbeck, larger populations, are there subgroups of kids that could benefit from more technology-driven education? So he's going to look into that. His concern is that technology changes so quickly that, once we are ready to ramp up a new program, the technology's changed, so now we're already behind the eight ball, and it's kind of hard to project where things are going in the future. So, as challenging a conversation as that is, he's going to do his due diligence and get back just about that. Jaclyn pointed out that it's hard even for kids coming into Dutchess with the level of technology that they need to use, they're having a really hard time grappling with the gaps in their education in their younger years, so we really need to help our kids be prepared for their next steps, whatever those are. We asked about the idea about shared staff, particularly as vacancies arise in the future. Are there ways we can maintain programs by sharing staff with neighboring districts, that kind of thing? He's going to take a look around and see where he thinks the tea leaves are reading. He also is very specific about needing to get specific questions from us, not just sort of these philosophical discussions he can't really be ready for, but, you know, what would it look like if we did this? How would that affect the K-12 programming? If we present questions in that way, then he's much better able to really dig into the question, get answers for us. He briefed us on the summer curriculum work that we heard about here. As I think it was Dr. Davenport noted, it's all still in the process of being approved, but we got the draft of the anatomy kinesiology curriculum that's being offered for the first time in the high school. We'll review that at our October meeting, the journalism curriculum, and also the first semester of English 12. So, second semester is still being developed, and we'll get that shortly. A lot of tech-related PD did happen over the summer. Chancellor four of the grade levels went through to better understand that, how they're going to use technology infused in their ELA curriculum. Canvas and Flipping Classrooms was also worked on over the summer, and Marvin's going to sort of put together a cheat sheet of all of the exemplars of what's being infused in the curriculum. Dr. Davenport stole my thunder about the new standards. It's not just ELA and math that the state's been monkeying around with, but social studies and science actually saw the largest change, and we've been waiting for it to come down the pike, but they've been approved, so now it's a matter of digging in and figuring out what we have to do. So, I think it'll be exciting work next year or so. Next meeting, we're going to be reviewing and discussing the anatomy kinesiology curriculum, journalism, and the first half of the English curriculum. And Marvin's also going to put together a slide deck, sort of also cheat sheet about what's new about the new standards, based on what we do now. So, stay tuned.
Questions? Comments?
Good stuff. I'm sorry that the curriculum work wasn't in our packets, it was really impressive. K-12, all the way across, lots of teachers working over the summer.
Very productive summer. All right, so let's move on to the 2017 NISBA proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions that are on our agenda.
Well, so really, the question is whether there are additional things people would like to discuss. We did, you know, spend a fair amount of time in our last meeting, and we leave, for those of us who are going to the convention, we are leaving on Thursday the 12th, so we'll have one more meeting on the 10th before we need to go there specifically Mark and his first-wire surrogate need to be prepared to go onto the convention floor and vote on our behalf, so.
As I said at the last meeting, I mean, I've read through these, didn't see anything I would particularly highlight that we should agree or disagree with, but I did bring up the one about the resolution from Poughkeepsie City School District on voting requirements for the two ballots, and also the bylaw amendment, the first one that's in here, about adding a member to the board directors. Other than that, I haven't seen anything that would really call out people's attention.
I have a, I guess, it's not really a strong view, but in terms of the adding the member from that particular group, I do have to say, one of the most impressive and memorable panels I've ever attended in the years we've been going to the conference was organized by that group, and it was a group of students from high schools across New York State, including Poughkeepsie, and they did an amazing job of talking about the challenges that, you know, schools that serve predominantly African-American students are facing, and challenges they're facing. So, although that group may not kind of numerically have the capacity to elect a representative, right, within the other means at their disposal, it strikes me that that might be a reason for them to have a seat at the table, to help guide the future of NISBA. I mean, it's not an extremely diverse group of folks you see at NISBA conferences.
I totally agree. I think they do really important, specific work for kids in this state, and I have no problem with them having a seat at the table if, you know, other component districts are willing.
I know we had kind of like gotten that issue out there, and there was some question of whether that opened up a precedent for, in other ways, for other groups, but I guess you'd have to just consider that on a case-by-case basis. I don't know if anyone else has views about that, or?
All seems pretty standard stuff.
There's also, and Marvin, correct me if I'm wrong, on October 5th, that Thursday before Columbus Day weekend, there's a meeting of the Dutchess County School Boards Association, and again, I believe they're going to take up a general conversation of the resolution, so something may arise from that discussion. I know, you know, Mark attends pretty regularly, and I try to attend when my schedule allows me to, and any of you are invited, and you don't need a special invitation or to be a member of the executive committee there, just be there if you're interested. So that'll be the discussion on, again, I think it's October 5th.
Some of you guys can update us after.
Sure.
Anything else about the? All right. I guess everyone trusts you, Mark.
Good, I'm happy to hear that.
All right, so let's move on to comments. Good news.
I think they did. It sounds like it's been a great start.
It was exciting to have the whirlwind tour of the facilities ourselves this evening, and to see all the great work that's being done there, and really painstaking work that's being done. And I think sometimes we see the buildings in the daytime when they come in and the students come in, and we're privileged, in a way, to see how it's all made after hours, so that's very heartening.
Well, I'll just take on to that comment, and I get to see it more than you guys do, and what strikes, and has always struck me, is the pride that Sheldon's department takes in doing that work. I mean, most of them, most, every year for many, many years, aren't just going through the motions, they're, you know, I mean, somebody's going to dig in and, you know, prepare that terrazzo, you know, a piece of terrazzo floor that's about as big as this tabletop, and spend an hour of their time doing that, and that speaks to pride in their work and the pride that they take in making the buildings look good, so I just want to recognize that.
I'll just add to that, too, that, you know, having done that sort of work in my distant past, I'm very impressed with, you know, how the technology's improved, or, you know, something kind of mundane job as, you know, cleaning and polishing floors, that the technology's improved even in that area, to make things easier and simpler, and the chemicals have changed, and all that, so.
Well, very inspiring. Any other good news? Old business.
I have a few items. I really need to be getting commitments from board members on three dates that are coming up, and October is going to be busy, I can tell you right now. Over and above the four board members and I, who are going to the NISBA convention on October 12th through 14th, or whatever it is. October 19th, which is Thursday, is Deidre Byrne's recognition dinner at the Mid-Hudson School Study Council. I really need to find out which one of you, which ones of you are going, because we have to register you, and a number of our administrators have expressed an interest in attending as well, so I need to get firm commitments from them as well, and I'm not, I haven't really put my mind, had the opportunity to put my mind to expanding that to other members of the staff, but I think we should make it known to them that this is happening, but at the very least, I think, a good showing of members of our board and members of our administrative team will send a good message to our community.
Diane?
It's in Newburgh?
It's in Anthony's Pier 9, just south of Newburgh.
At like 6:30?
I think it starts at 6:30. Yeah, you're right, you're right, actually, it is 6:00, it just starts at 7:00. It's like a reception.
Do you know, if you register, if there's a canceled by date, because that is also the night of the Mahalls finals, if we were to have a team in the finals.
Derek would appreciate that irony.
She will, she will, I know that, I know that.
I'll ask Whitney when she collects names to also inquire as to if you're only able to go, if there's a cancel date, we'll find out, I don't know the answer to that question.
Unfortunately, we wouldn't, I guess, we wouldn't know until, what day is that? That's Thursday till Tuesday, the 17th, we wouldn't know if the 19th is necessary.
That might be a little too tight to cancel, we know penalty. We'll inquire, just find somebody in your place so that you can.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't want to jinx it, I don't want to do that.
You know, every time you buy a ticket for something, then something crazy else comes up.
Heading towards doing that.
I know, I fit in your shoes.
So, we need those of you who are able to commit to step up and commit, please. Also, on October 25th, several of you have already asked me, the NISBA Budget Workshop is being held in Poughkeepsie, which is great, obviously, because the travel is minimal. Again, it's another, I think it's in the evening, if I'm not mistaken.
5:30.
Yeah, you know, it's another day out, but will likely be worthwhile to attend. Again, we'll need to know, and get you registered, and finally, I'm not sure, I haven't seen an invitation yet, but Whitney managed to weedle some information out of a private source. No, I have it right here, thank you. Again, on October 26th, the next evening, down in Tarrytown, is the 2017 Regional Superintendent Board Member Dinner sponsored by the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, and it's their 40th Annual Dinner. The topic is why civic engagement should matter, and the role schools could play, and the keynote speakers are Michael Rebel, whose name you, some of you may be familiar with regarding the lawsuit, the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit, and Giselle Martin Keane. So, again, I know it's like a busy October and a busy week, if you're interested in going to any of those three, please, please let me know, and I will try not to browbeat you much, much more than that, but I will need to know. If you're interested in going, and if you're not, then.
Do you want to give us some kind of a deadline or something so we know?
Well, they're all different deadlines, so like tomorrow.
All right, tomorrow, let them know by tomorrow.
I mean, as soon as you can, certainly by the end of this week, I think. They all have different deadlines, and we'll see if we can find out about cancellation policies as well, and we'll let, Whitney can send you out an email just to let you know about that. Okay, so just a lot coming up, and all good stuff, too, I mean, it's great, but it's like a busy, a busy month. Okay, that's all I have.
That's all your old business.
The old business, yeah.
Any other old business, anyone? No public comment, since we have no public. Other?
Yes?
I just had a question for Joe and Mark about whether or not you're meeting with the Reinbeck Collaboration Village and Town.
Yes, that got canceled. We were supposed to meet with them la, it might have been this Monday, right?
Last week.
Was it last Monday? And Mark Molinaro called the village mayor and the town supervisor to some kind of photo op in Poughkeepsie that they, understandably, I'm not criticizing Gary or Elizabeth, but they felt compelled to go, and that was the same day as our meeting, so we have to reschedule for, I think, like the third weekend in October, so we're going to meet with them, it's just we had to reschedule, and because of our schedules and theirs, it got pushed out another, almost a month later than we had planned to meet with them, but we will be meeting with them, just not until October.
So, last Thursday, I attended the meeting of Senator Torino's Education Advisory Committee. So there were basically two topics that were covered, so apparently, I had, well, not apparently, I missed the meeting over the summer because it was held in the afternoon and I couldn't be there. Apparently, at that meeting, there was a heavy discussion about the Smart Schools Bond Act, and how slow it is to, you know, make your claim and all that. So, the senator had her staff, you know, dig up some information about that, and so I have a, actually I have a handout that was given at the meeting that I'll scan and send to everybody, but I just didn't have a chance to do that yet. Basically, there was really nothing presented there that I hadn't already heard, so I think, you know, as far as Reinbeck is concerned, we're pretty much on top of all that, but apparently there was confusion or, you know, questions about, you know, how to make your claim and actually get your money and all that, so the senator's staff presented some information on that. The second half, we had quite a bit of discussion about unfunded mandates, and the senator has offered to try to put together some, you know, some sort of initiative to try to do some research on unfunded mandates and try to spearhead something to reduce unfunded mandates. So, for the next meeting, she has promised to come to the meeting with some information about, you know, what all the unfunded mandates are, and, you know, then the committee can brainstorm ways where there might be opportunities for reduction in unfunded mandates. So, it sounds promising, but we'll see what happens at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll be curious to see what she presents. The unfunded mandates topic is, it can be a potentially thorny topic, because there are some mandates, albeit, albeit they unfunded, are mandates that, many of which, I think we would look at and say, I don't think it's a good idea to cut them, like, fund them, don't tell us they're unfunded so you don't have to. so you don't have to, so they're not a mandate anymore. Because many of them are worthwhile. It's just, they don't come with any financial support from the state. So I would just say that the problem with unfunded mandates is the unfunded part, not necessarily, in all cases, the mandate part. So that's, to me, that's where the focus.
I should add, specific discussion was had on data collection and, you know, how there's some data reports that have to be submitted that overlap other data reports. So there's data points that are collected on more than one report. So how could we streamline data collection so that, you know, if something's being collected on one report, it's not asked for again on another report, to try to reduce some of that time and money that's spent on collecting the data? And of course, Warren Handler, who's the superintendent in Pine Plains, is on the committee. And he mentioned that, you know, a lot of these legislate, these data collection things are kind of the child of legislation. So there's a lot of legislators that, you know, will have objections to reducing data collection because that's in their law that they proposed or whatever. So, I mean, the senator was kind of cognizant of that. But she promised to try to work on that. So we'll see what happens.
Okay. Any other other? Okay. Let's move on to our action items. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. That motion passes. 6.2, motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year, C attached.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the voluntary resignation of Jerry Sekula from her position as monitor, conditional upon her subsequent appointment to the position of health aide at 6.5 hours per day with a 26-week probationary period effective September 5th, 2017, at a salary of Step 3, $22,968 prorated, in accordance with the ante-salary schedule for 2017-18.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the civil service appointment of Dawn McNamara to the position of monitor, 3.5 hours per diem, with a 26-week probationary period effective September 5th, 2017, at a salary of Step 1, $21,652 prorated, in accordance with the ante-salary schedule for 2017-18.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisors for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2017-18 school year, C attached.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Ashley Wilsey to commence on or about January 2nd, 2018, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability, as certified by a physician in writing through February 13th, 2018, to the extent of her accrued sick leave and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave or thereabouts, if and as requested in writing.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint TBD?
Yeah, we're going to recommend that that be tabled. We don't have a name to replace the TBD at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion that this be, that this motion be tabled?
Salute.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, that motion is tabled. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Vicki Honer as a part-time special education teacher, assigned to a position with an out-of-district student at the Primrose Hill School on an hour-per-diem basis, the cost of which will be billed to the student's home school district at the pleasure of the Board of Education, at a salary an effective date September 27th, 2017, at the rate of $88.33 per hour, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2016-17.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of miscellaneous used laboratory glassware to the Reinbeck High School Science Department from Peter Grimm?
Salute.
Second. Questions or discussion? I'd like to thank Mr. Grimm for his generous donation. All those in favor? It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of 22 hand-sewn superhero cakes by Mrs. Giovanna Selden to Mrs. Jumper Jones' kindergarten class for use in the class's reading program to inspire the love of reading in each student in the class?
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? We are delighted that there will be superhuman superhero readers in this class. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the 2017-18 superintendent's administrative goals at your place?
Salute.
Second, may I make a motion to table this for further discussion?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling? Okay, that's unanimous. That motion is tabled. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to award the contract for physical therapy to restore occupational and physical therapy?
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to award the contract for physical therapy to to chronic occupational therapy?
Salute. Question?
Oh, second.
Should that be occupational therapy? It should be occupational therapy, not physical.
Contract for occupational.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so as amended? All those in favor? All those in favor? Are we ready to vote, members?
Yep.
Okay, all right. That is unanimous. That motion passes. Okay. May I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss the status of new employee in the district?
Salute.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We are moving into executive session.